Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Small Business, joint with the Committee of Economic Development. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices, and just as a reminder, no one may approach the dais. Thank you so much. Chairs, we are ready to begin. Good morning and welcome to this joint hearing of, at the New York City Council's Committee on Economic Development and Small Business. I am Amanda Farias, and I have the privilege of chairing the Committee on Economic Development. I would like to extend my thanks to the members of both committees, the administration, and the city's official tourism marketing organization formerly known as NYC and Company, now known as NYC Tourism and Conventions, for coming together for this hearing. This hearing is particularly important, given the vital role that the tourism industry plays in the economic well-being of New York City, especially its small businesses. While the tourism industry at large has been hit hard by the pandemic, the city's small businesses, many of which are dependent on tourism, have been particularly affected. Small businesses throughout the outer boroughs play a vital role in our city's economy. We cannot fully recover without the success of the Bronx, Queens, Brooklyn, and Staten Island communities. As a Bronxite, it is important to me to understand how the reopening of the city and the return of tourists is impacting businesses across all five boroughs. Over the last several years, our committees have been at the forefront of the council's efforts to address the challenges facing the city's tourism industry. We have held multiple hearings and introduced bills aiming at improving the city's tourist experience and the tourism economy. We have also closely monitored the industry's recovery during the pandemic and provided support where necessary. In 2019, the city welcomed a record 66.6 million tourists, supporting over 403,000 jobs across the five boroughs and generating over $71 billion in economic activity, while the COVID-19 pandemic decimated the city's tourism industry, leading to a 67% decrease in the numbers of tourists in 2020, making it the city's worst year for tourism since the 1980s. According to recent data from NYC Tourism and Conventions, the city's tourism industry has been making a steady recovery since the height of the pandemic. In the third quarter of 2022, the city welcomed over 7 million visitors, a 52% increase from the same period in 2021. Hotel occupancy rates have also improved, with an average occupancy of 70% in the third quarter of 2022 for hotels that are currently open, up from 50% in the same period in 2021. These numbers paint a hopeful picture for the city's recovery, but they are still well behind the city's peak of 16.3 million tourists in the third quarter of 2019. Today's hearing will focus on the efforts of NYC Tourism and Conventions and how they have helped to improve the city's tourism economy over the last year and a half, as indoor dining became more normalized, museums and shows, museums, shows, and cultural institutions reopened, and the international tourists began to return to the city. We will be looking at the data on tourist numbers, hotel occupancy levels, and attendance at shows, museums, and cultural attractions. We will also be discussing lessons learned from the other jurisdictions as the world continues to reopen. As we continue to emerge from the pandemic, we hope to ensure that the city's small businesses, particularly those in the tourism industry, are given the support they need to recover and thrive. We are committed to working with NYC Tourism and Conventions and other partners to draw tourists back to New York to ensure that its many world-class attractions recover as quickly and as safely as possible. I look forward to a productive and informative discussion today on the efforts being made by NYC Tourism and Conventions towards achieving these goals. Before we begin, I'd like to thank the economic development team here at the council, Senior Counsel Alex Palanoff, Senior Policy Analyst William Hongach, and Finance Analyst Glenn Martinelli for all their hard work preparing for this hearing. I will now turn the floor over to my co-chair, Councilmember Julie Menon, for her opening remarks.
Thank you so much, Chair Farias, and good morning, everyone. I'm Councilmember Julie Menon, Chair of the Committee on Small Business. Thank you for joining today's joint oversight hearing with the Committees on Economic Development and Small Business to discuss tourism and its economic impact on New York City's small business. I, first of all, want to thank my co-chair for all of her leadership and support in putting together today's hearing, and I want to welcome our colleagues who are here with us. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Alexa Vilas has joined us, and will acknowledge other councilmembers as they join. New York City's small businesses are vital to the life of our city. They contribute to the vibrancy and uniqueness that make New York City so special to residents and visitors alike. For more than three years, we've seen small businesses and the tourism industry struggle in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Reports show that since the beginning of the pandemic, almost 26,000 small businesses were forced to shut down permanently, and, as my co-chair has stated, in 2020, our city suffered its worst year for tourism since the 1980s. But there is cause for hope. Since the United States lifted its 18-month-long travel restrictions on international tourists in November of 2021, the city's tourism sector has enjoyed exponential growth. According to New York City Tourism and Conventions, in 2022, the city reached 85% of 2019 visitation levels, and spending, sector employment, and economic impact also climbed back to the 85% range. New York City Tourism and Conventions projects that there will be approximately 61 million tourists visiting the city in 2023. Small businesses in sectors spanning recreation, food service, retail, and more stand to contribute greatly to the resurgence of the city's tourism industry, just as they have contributed to the city's economy in recent years. For example, Broadway contributed $8.45 billion to the city's economy in the 2021-to-2022 season, and 62.5% of Broadway tickets are purchased by tourists. A full quarter of restaurant sales volume in the city comes from tourists, and tourists spent $10.5 billion at food and drinking establishments in 2019. And in 2019 alone, tourists spent $9.3 billion at retail shops in New York and accounted for nearly one-fifth of all retail spending in the city. With intentional effort and collaboration among government partners, business owners, advocates, and other stakeholders, our city's beloved small businesses and the tourism sector can not only rebound, but redouble their efforts in making New York City a world-class tourist destination. Today's hearing looks to ensure that New York City's small businesses, particularly those in the tourism industry, recover and thrive as they play a leading role in welcoming visitors back to our city. I look forward to hearing testimony from New York City Tourism and Conventions and asking questions of the additional city agencies that are present today. I'm eager to hear about New York City Tourism and Conventions' plan to incorporate small businesses into their strategy, programming, and outreach. I also anticipate hearing more about the relationship between New York City Tourism and Conventions and the New York City Department of Small Business Services, and also look forward to hearing from small businesses and advocates on today's important topic. Finally, I want to thank Alex Palanoff, William Hongach, Nicole Catta, and Rebecca Barilla from Central Staff for their work putting together this hearing, as well as my own Chief of Staff Jonathan Shutt and Legislative Director Brandon Jordan for their assistance. I'll now turn it back over to my co-chair. Thank you.
Good morning. Alex Palanoff, Senior Counsel. Well, members of the administration who are giving testimony today, please raise their right hands. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Great. Thank you so much. You may begin when ready.
Sorry, there's a cup of coffee there, just to make sure. Oh, sorry. Now's the time to read your testimony, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Chair Farias and Chair Menon and members of the Committee on Economic Development and Small Business. I am Dr. Donna Karen, Executive Vice President of Research and Insights, and I'm joined today by Nancy Mamanna, Chief Marketing Officer at New York City Tourism and Conventions, testifying on behalf of our CEO, Fred Dixon. We thank you for this opportunity to share the current status of the city's tourism and hospitality industry and New York City Tourism and Conventions' efforts, along with our government and private sector partners, to revitalize the industry as we work towards full economic recovery. I'd like to provide a quick background on who we are and what we do as an organization. New York City Tourism and Conventions, formerly NYC and Company, is the official destination marketing organization and convention and visitors bureau for the five boroughs of New York City. Our mission is to maximize inbound travel and tourism opportunities throughout the city, build economic prosperity, and spread the dynamic image of the five boroughs around the world. We are a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit member organization and represent the interests of nearly 2,000 member businesses and organizations from across all five boroughs. We are governed by an 85-member Board of Directors, representing a diverse range of businesses from across the city. Our members range from hotels, cultural organizations, restaurants and attractions, to bids and chambers of commerce. The majority of these businesses fall into the small business category with entrepreneurial owners, limited staffs, and revenues. Together, their memberships fund about half of our operations. We also hold a procurement contract with the City of New York to provide tourism marketing services. Excuse me. Travel and tourism has long been a driver of economic prosperity for New York City with direct and indirect impacts across five boroughs. Prior to the pandemic, 2019 was the 10th consecutive year of growth in the number of visitors and importantly, in visitor spending, business revenues, job creation, new investments, and city tax revenue. Growth was halted as businesses shut down operations, borders were closed, and convenings of any size became impossible. The pandemic crippled the tourism and hospitality industry, bringing normal operations to a virtual halt in March 2020. That first year hit the travel and tourism industry harder than any other sector in the city's economy. Combined domestic and international visitation dropped by 65%, hotel demand fell by 69%, visitor spending fell by 66%. This translated to a 50% loss in jobs and a $2 billion decrease in local tax revenues from our industry. More industry jobs were lost than in all the losses in finance, information, real estate, and professional and business service sectors combined. In the second year of the pandemic, our industry fared only slightly better. International and business travel were stalled, and safety regulations limited activities across all sectors. Our breakthrough began in Q4 2021, when the U.S. reopened to international visitors from Europe and elsewhere. Just a few weeks ago, on March 15th, we passed the third anniversary of the pandemic disruption. For the city's tourism and meeting sector, we are still working to return to pre-pandemic levels of visitor spending, jobs, and tax revenue. In a typical pre-pandemic year, 2019, for example, travel and tourism supported a little over 400,000 jobs in the private sector. This was about 1 in 10 jobs, still an impressive number in our tech, finance, real estate, and biomed-driven economy. At the end of 2022, industry jobs were still down about 35% in key sectors supported by visitor spending. Most of those jobs are in services and small businesses that directly interact with the visitors from the moment they arrive by land, rail, or air, to where they stay, what they eat, what they buy, what they do, and how they move around town. Our estimates for 2022 suggest that the industry will have recovered to about 270,000 jobs, including many in the services, wholesale, and retail businesses that provide for the industry, as well as visitor accommodations, attractions, shops, and dining options. As you may know, a significant proportion of the tourism workforce also lives in neighborhoods throughout the city. Many of them work in small businesses that provide key inputs to the visitor experience, from food wholesalers to event specialists to local tour guides and startups. The tourism ecosystem spreads benefits at every level. There is also a benefit every New Yorker can feel. Without the tax contributions coming from the tourism and conventions we host, the average New York City household would be on the hook for another $2,000 in state and local taxes. While the private sector in the city has surpassed the employment levels of March 2020, many of the businesses that rely on visitor spending are still lagging, however. Restaurants and bars, which rely on visitors for about 1/3 of their patrons, remain below peak employment as remote and hybrid work reduces the weekday population around the central business and entertainment districts. On a similar trajectory, though smaller in numbers, the arts, entertainment, and recreation sector is also pacing back, but not yet reaching prior levels. Given the attraction of the city's cultural community to visitors, 6 in 10 jobs in the sector are supported by visitor spending. As of February 2023, the Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates that there are 42,700 people employed in the city's accommodation sector. That's 80% of the seasonal benchmark. Active hotel inventory, the combination of new properties and reopenings, is nearly at 2019 levels, with just over 125,000 rooms serving travelers to New York City. Seasonal occupancy patterns have returned to form, with midweek business travelers joining the growing international visitors and domestic leisure travelers to keep occupancy rates rising month after month. Average daily room rates are continuing to increase, reaching $214 on average for the first quarter of this year. Nevertheless, hotels in major cities across the country are, like New York City, still performing below their pre-pandemic levels. In the first quarter of this year, New York City hotels averaged 71.8% occupancy, still 7% below our 2019 benchmark of 77%. Looking out to the remainder of the year and into next, New York City is facing increasing competition for all our visitor markets. Domestic visitors are looking to travel internationally again. Business travelers are still hypercautious as concerns about recession swirl, and other first-tier meeting cities are making attractive offers to meeting planners to bring their events to Los Angeles, Dallas, Las Vegas, Orlando, Atlanta, and even Chicago. New York will remain the most popular international destination, but challenges are still ahead. As you will hear from my colleague Nancy Mamanna in a moment, we've come through these past few years through strategic government investment in our work that allowed us to maintain our presence and messaging in key global markets, making us ready to pivot back to welcoming domestic and international visitors into the city. This much-needed government funding has expanded our marketing research and research capabilities. Now Nancy will share our 2023 marketing campaigns and programs that continue to revitalize the travel and hospitality industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Good morning, councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to share our work. I'd like to start by thanking our many city partners we collaborate with and look to continue partnering with moving forward, especially our close work with Deputy Mayor Maria Torres Springer's office, as well as various other city agencies. Today's hearing comes almost exactly a month after we unveiled our new brand and name change, as you referenced, to now become New York City Tourism and Conventions. This doesn't change our mission or our portfolio of programs to drive visitation to New York City, but we want to better define what work we do. We created our new brand after embarking on a tremendous amount of research, which included in-depth stakeholder interviews across our staff, global offices, Board of Directors, and City Hall, in addition to over 1,000 surveys with our member businesses, residents, and visitors, after which we concluded that the name NYC and Company wasn't clearly and immediately conveying the breadth and depth of the critical work this organization does to power the city's economy. Our goal is to position this rebrand as a milestone for the organization, which is an evolution in our strategy and builds upon the work we've always done, showcasing authentic, aspirational, five-borough stories to the world, now under the banner of New York City Tourism Conventions, to lead the industry forward. We've had very positive reception to the new brand and logo and hope you all share our excitement about how it positively positions the five boroughs. We also created a color palette that reflects New York City, with the black as the primary color, which provides the basis for the secondary color palette, which is a survey of New York City icons and associations. Thank you. Red, brick red, fairy orange, lox pink, taxi yellow, rockaway sand, subway green, liberty green, coffee cup blue, and skyline blue, with more added as the system develops in the future. Happy to answer any questions around the rebrand at the end, but wanted you all to know that the look and feel of the marketing for our programs we produce will change, while the content will largely be similar to past years. In September of last year, we launched the refresh of our Global It's Time for New York City campaign, which is the largest multi-phase global tourism marketing and advertising campaign ever created for New York City. It's Time for New York City was initially rolled out as restrictions began to lift. More people were getting vaccinated and travel resumed in the United States and beyond. The campaign reminds visitors of the city's unrivaled energy, excitement, and the abundance of endless experiences and resiliency that make New York City the most iconic destination in the world. Designed to create urgency and FOMO, the fear of missing out, It's Time for New York City campaign has three phases and includes television, digital, outdoor media, and partnerships. The goal of this campaign was to encourage visitors to explore the five boroughs. This latest phase ran in 18 countries with 17 unique travel partners, including Porter Airlines in Canada, Havas Voyage in France, Aeromexico in Mexico, Asiana Airlines in South Korea, Mastercard in Hong Kong, and United Airlines in Sweden, the U.S., and the U.K. The results have been impressive. We have an external research firm called Samari conduct an analysis on the marketing and the ROI on the domestic campaign, which was $352 for every dollar spent on the advertising and 241 for every dollar spent internationally. The campaigns to date have run in two phases, and as it continues, the results continue to compound. So far, cumulatively, it has resulted in close to $8 billion in visitor spend, over $820 million in tax revenue to the city, and influenced over 3.5 million trips from July 2021 through July 2022. The Samari data has been a major boost to understanding spending and the impacts of our marketing campaigns. Funding is a crucial component of conducting this research, and this was the first time we were able to do so because of the federal aid from COVID. Going forward with a peg, we will not have funds to do so, and we will not be able to build the momentum we are currently achieving. I'm happy to further discuss this in the Q&amp;A. We've continued our engagement with locals and tri-state visitors and commuters through our annual vibrancy marketing campaigns, designed to help promote the energy and attractiveness of our local tourism and hospitality businesses during need periods, which historically include Q1 and July and August. Since its inception in summer of 1992, New York City Restaurant Week has been a celebration of dining, bringing people together to experience the city's fine dining and generating business for our local restaurants. On the heels of Restaurant Week's continued success, New York City Tourism and Conventions has relaunched six seasonal vibrancy marketing programs, including the twice-annual New York City Broadway Week, Off-Broadway Week with two-for-one tickets to some of Broadway's hottest shows, as well as the shows featured at smaller theaters across the boroughs, and New York City Must See Week, offering two-for-one tickets to over 40 attractions, museums, tours, and performing arts. These programs have attracted visitors from the tri-state region and beyond and are economic drivers during our typically slower travel seasons, and help ensure that a visit to the city remains accessible to a diverse range of visitors. In October 2021, we added It's Time for Culture campaign, supporting our performing arts and cultural organizations in every borough. We also just announced the second year of It's Time for Culture last week, which launches in May, with nearly 100 organizations participating across the five boroughs. More on that shortly. In January of this year, we brought back New York City Winter Outing, a combination of New York City Restaurant Week, Broadway Week, Must See Week, and the second year of including New York City Hotel Week. By combining all programs on a broader platform and under one messaging umbrella, we expand the reach of the message to daytrippers and valuable overnight visitors and drive traffic and span to businesses and organizations across the city. This year's program outperformed both 2022 and 2019 traffic and conversion benchmarks, even though we had lower budgets to market the program than in 2022. We had over 700 participants in the program, which include over 500 restaurants across the five boroughs, over 40 cultural institutions, Broadway shows, and hotels. Through this program, we partnered with various city agencies, including New York City Department of Small Business Services and the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment. We'd especially like to acknowledge the supportive moam as they once again sponsor New York City Winter Outing. Their support helped to offset participation fees for the program as part of ongoing efforts in tourism recovery. In conducting our outreach for participants in the Winter Outing program, in addition to the agency partners, we worked with the Chambers of Commerce and Bids across the five boroughs and also sent emails to all city council members. We're always looking for new participants for these programs and hope we can partner with both of your committees and all of your offices to get the word out about these programs in the future. Earlier this month, we announced the return of It's Time for Culture with offerings at nearly 100 culturels across the five boroughs, available next month from May 9th to the 21st. The program comprising of seasonal events, concerts, tours, classes, family-friendly programs, and more kicks off the unofficial start of the New York City Summer Cultural Season, driving traffic to participating locations across all five boroughs. A full list of organizations... Sorry, I just skipped myself here. Excuse me. ...are available on our website, and we continue to support this sector and cultural tourism. As we focus on marketing, we have also expanded our social media campaigns to focus on different sectors. We remain focused on celebrating New York City's diversity, not only in terms of our neighbors and neighborhoods, but also in the never-ending variety of things to do in the five boroughs. As we amplify New York City to our audience of over 2.7 million followers across our platforms, we have launched a variety of different series. I'd like to highlight a few. #CheckInNYC spotlights hotel properties across the city. #MuseumMondays highlights different cultural institutions. And #SavorNYC, in which different influencers visit restaurants across New York City to taste their food. And in this series, we have, among our most recent collaborations, was a visit to New Asha Sri Lankan Restaurant in Staten Island, a look at the Venezuelan Christmas staple of Halacas at Patacon Pizao in Elmhurst, Queens, and a feature on 97-year-old Holocaust survivor and S&amp;S Cheesecake founder Fred Schuster in the Bronx, which went viral with almost 500,000 video plays. A major focus of our work is connecting small businesses to the tourism industry, and for many, this is not an easy task. To remove the barriers to understanding the industry, we have two major initiatives. One is Tourism Ready, which is a free educational program. The courses provide an introduction to the tourism industry and working with the travel trade for any businesses or entities in New York City that are interested in learning more. Tourism Ready 101 looks at how to bring these visitors to your neighborhoods and businesses. The program places a particular emphasis on working with the travel trade, which are third-party travel sellers, packagers, and event planners. The program guides businesses through the steps to effectively work with the travel trade and help them identify methods to engage with these resellers to promote their businesses or neighborhood. We'd love to support... We'd love support from each of your offices and identifying businesses in your districts that might be interested in this free opportunity, and happy to connect with them and add them to our mailing list. There are workshops scheduled for almost every month of the year, so there's still a lot of opportunity for participation. Another initiative is through visits we coordinate with global travel partners, which we call reverse travel missions. Typically, travel missions entail traveling to destinations with high visitation and business selling their products and sell packages to tour operators. Many small businesses do not have the time, capacity, or funds to go on travel missions with us to destinations across the world, so we coordinate reverse missions where travel partners come to New York City. Through these coordinated visits, qualified small businesses gain access to the global market with no or very little investment, along with receiving the guidance and support they need. Last year, we had our first reverse sales mission, which had 17 small businesses and cultural institutions participating. For the remainder of this year into Q2 2024, we plan to have at least two of these reverse missions. Additionally, we continue to operate borough development familiarization trips for local receptive tour operators. We coordinate these by borough to give tour operators an in-depth handful of experiences and usually coordinate a day of visits encompassing eight to 10 different sites. Today, in fact, we are hosting one of these visits in Queens, and it includes close to 20 small businesses and cultural institutions. These visits are critical to highlight the diversity of experiences in New York City and to help tour operators better communicate all that we have to offer. While we celebrate the successful return of Broadway, performing arts, nightlife, music, and sports venues, the industry is still challenged as not all international borders have reopened, business meetings and conferences have not fully returned. New York City Tourism and Conventions will continue to support our industry by stimulating demand from hyper-local, regional, national, and international visitors. For example, we continue to book future meetings and convention anywhere from 10 days to 10 years out, depending upon the size of the event, to foster the return of business travel as much as possible. However, without a stable long-term funding strategy, we will fall behind our competitors in generating inbound travel from around the world and the spending and tax revenue associated with it for all five boroughs. We hope today's conversation is the continuation of a shared interest to ensure New York City's... New York City remains one of the world's leading destinations. Thank you for inviting us to testify. As always, we appreciate the council's support of the industry and being partners with us in this work. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your testimony. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmembers Brooks Powers, Riley Gutierrez, and Councilmember Ang, who is virtual, who have joined us for today's hearing. And let's just get right into it. So I appreciate your answers or your... and your testimony around the rebranding of NYCTC. I'd like to know if there's any major differences outside of what you've described already and if there are any new responsibilities.
It's really just us leaning more heavily into our role.
and making it more clear that we are, in fact, the destination marketing organization responsible for tourism marketing. So we felt it was important to clarify in our name, but our remit does not change, and our mission does not change.
Okay, great. And have tourism numbers improved in the city since the lows of the pandemic? And are there any specific data points that you use to track the tourism trends in New York City?
Improvement is definitely happening. We had dropped to less than twenty-two million visitors in 2020. We forecast that this year we will be well above sixty-one million and on our way to full recovery by the end of 2024. We do this by tracking through syndicated surveys of visitors, traffic in rail, air, and land, visitor spending, and hotel performance. We work with a number of third-party vendors who collect the original data, and then we bring it into our analysis of the city as a whole.
Can you explain a little bit more about-- so it makes a lot of sense to me that you're tracking airway traffic and seeing how many folks are coming in. In terms of surveys, are you doing anonymous surveys to visitors that are coming to New York City? Are you partnering with airlines that have surveys come up on the screen, things like that?
That's a very good question. Thank you. You touch the heart of my daily life.
I'm interested, so tell me all of it.
We work with two major resources for tracking visitation at the visitor level. One is a company called DK Schiflett, which is part of a larger entity, MMGY. They conduct hundreds of thousands of surveys in the course of the year of domestic travelers. And one of the key questions in that survey is, did you visit New York City in the last three months? And then if they visited New York City, they also get asked, did you visit any of the five boroughs? Please check all that apply. So we know statistically who is visiting, not by name or person, but what we get is an anonymous profile of this collective of visitors during the course of the year that allows us to understand whether they're here for business or vacation, whether they stay in a hotel, or they're crashing on their cousin's couch, and who's in the travel party, what they do, et cetera. We have a parallel study that's actually conducted by the U.S. Department of Commerce, National Travel and Tourism Office, which is done at major U.S. airport hubs on the outbound return travel of international visitors. And they get asked basically the same set of questions. Where are you from? Where did you go? What else did you do? How did you stay? What did you spend? And in both of these cases, because New York City is, on the international side, the number-one destination in the United States for international travel, statistically, we have a very large sample. It's a very reliable sample that allows us to break it out by country of origin. We profile about twenty-five different origin markets that could then get used in our marketing and strategy. On the domestic side, we compete with a couple of leisure destinations that tend to pull more family travel than New York, but we're still talking about pre-pandemic over fifty-five million visitors that we can profile those markets based on their characteristics that allows us to know what's going on, but also to feed into the marketing analysis.
Sure. And how regularly are we aggregating that data?
These are annual. The domestic data I see quarterly.
Okay.
But you always want that annual leveling out. We forecast three times a year. We work with a company called Tourism Economics, which is an Oxford economics company, and they forecast based on a whole variety of the other data inputs. What is happening in hotels, what's happening on Broadway, museum attendance, attendance at the Statue of Liberty, bridge and tunnel traffic, non-commuter rail traffic, airline arrivals. So we build a forecast model that we then validate with the survey data, and these two things interact.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. And similarly, I suppose, how do you track the economic impact of tourism in the city? And what are, if any, metrics that you use to measure it?
Again, it's somewhat the same set of data inputs. Again, working with Tourism Economics, who have developed a proprietary in-plan model for us. We're looking at hotel revenues, the revenues in the restaurant sector, the revenues in a variety of attractions and other things, together with what our predictors are for visitor spending based on tracking credit card data, again anonymously, as well as the survey data, and some things that go on that economists do that honestly, they tell me they're doing.
Yeah. No, I understand. Trust me. You gotta trust the economists. The Coalition of New York City Hospitality and Tourism Recovery was established in July of 2020 to bring together major stakeholders in tourism to help restore the tourism sector. Is the coalition still meeting regularly?
No, it is not.
Okay. And have there been any-- any recent updates from any of the coalition meetings that came out?
We sunsetted the coalition last year at our annual meeting in March. And so several of those folks are still partners of ours, whether they're on our board or in various chambers and bids. So we have regular interactions as appropriate and as relevant as it happens, but there is no formal follow-up for the coalition. We had to sort of put a stake in the ground on when we were doing so.
Sure. And are there any ongoing initiatives to attract international visitors that have come out from the group?
We have begun-- at that point in time, we're really cooking up our next version of our global tourism campaign, which is the work that we would have done annually anyway with the onset of It's Time for New York City. It came out of the survey work and the research we did around that time. So it was really just us continuing our work and informed by what we learned through the coalition meetings, but it was really just us kind of picking up where we needed to once the borders opened.
Great. And in that continuation, how are you folks working to revitalize and bring visitors back to traditional tourist-heavy neighborhoods? Are there any major new initiatives being planned?
We have several tracts of campaign work that are basically always on. We have our vibrancy campaigns that we mentioned, for example, the Restaurant Weeks, et cetera, that primarily are targeting tri-state northeast corridor, U.S. domestic, that happen twice per year. Alongside that, simultaneously to that, we have what we call our Global Tourism Campaign, which ranges from ten to eighteen markets per year. We will partner with either an airline or a tour operator in our key feeder markets. We both come together with media, and we serve up a warm lead to that partner. So for example, in the UK, we've worked many times with British Airways or British Airways Holidays. So we'll both implement a pretty cohesive digital campaign. We'll serve them a warm lead, someone that's interested in travel, for them to capture the booking on their channels, and then they bring it back to us for planning. We do that on a rolling basis every year and making sure that we're doing everything we can to get to the travel booking because we don't capture that on our website. So we rely on the partners to do that.
Yeah. So that's what I was just gonna ask. So it seems like a lot of-- there are sets of metrics that you do have to aggregate and then reevaluate and look at, but it's happening with multiple partners. How do we collect all of that, or how does that come back to us and say that this was a successful campaign or a successful effort?
There are two ways we do that. We work with the individual partners to capture their metrics. So when they work with us, we either pixel their website, and if they don't allow that, we just get the data at the end. We really want to understand if there was a lift in bookings from their perspective. And the SMARI data that I mentioned earlier measured the campaign in the aggregate. So we've done this. We've gotten two domestic and international phases from June of 2021 to June of 2022. And that we are seeing, because we continued with It's Time for New York City, and we refreshed our primary visual, but we kept it as Lady Liberty, we're seeing equity in the campaign, and the results are compounding as more people see it in market. And that survey is where we're able to measure who saw the campaign and then ultimately came and booked a trip to New York. So that is where we're seeing the return on ad spend metrics and the amount of trips and the amount of visitor spend in the aggregate in the campaign. So we've got a full year of data now.
Okay. And is that the numbers that you gave us here with the three--
Yes.
Three something, three fifty-two?
Yeah. Yes.
So, okay. I just have like a couple things on this, and just so I can better understand it. You have here in the testimony ROI on the domestic campaign was three fifty-two dollars for every dollar spent and two forty-one ROI for every dollar spent internationally. The three hundred and fifty-two dollars or the two hundred and forty-one dollars, where is that, where are we seeing that go? Is that back to New York City? Or is that, are you looking at that saying that's the total that goes back to like an individual hotel or a local business?
The spending is citywide. And then you look at the actual spending and you calculate what part of that spending comes back into the city itself because of the city funding, because the ARPA funds and the support we've had from the city is what is paying for that advertising itself. The first thing you look at is, did that advertising influence a visitor? The visitor came, how much did they spend? That goes across the entire city. And then that spending generates and supports the business revenues, the jobs, and the tax revenue that the city collects. So you don't necessarily collect that tax revenue from the visitor. You collect it from the restaurant where the visitor ate on that meal. So it's several layers, which is why the numbers start very big. But--
Got it.
We're talking big numbers. We're talking billions of dollars in spending in a very short period of time that these ad campaign measurements were set between a specific date range. So someone may have seen that ad last summer, and now they're traveling. There's still a carry-on effect. But the measurements that we did with one of the industry's leading experts, and they do it for all of our competitors in all the major destinations, they are-- we drew a boundary around this, and we said, okay, how much did this affect in this time period? And that's what we're looking at.
Okay. That makes a lot more sense to me. It's across the board.
I think if you think of it as a funnel--
Right.
Right? And the bottom of that funnel is the city tax revenues. That's where it goes, into the city tax revenues.
Thank you for that explanation. Let me see. How has the NYCTC partnered with local businesses and attractions to promote tourism?
Local businesses are at the core of everything we do, from the programs we mention all the way through to our content. So while all the programs are going on, we've got a very robust editorial and content team that produces videos, profiles, interviews. So we're showcasing them constantly. That's at the core of our remit, whether it's our social channels or our website. And we do whatever we can to promote visitation, to see that content, profiling local business owners, neighborhood guides, making sure that a visitor in New York City is really truly experiencing the vibrancy and diversity of our boroughs. So that's an ongoing engine as well alongside the programs through which our participants are encouraged to join. And again, we are always welcoming more businesses into our programs. We realize not everyone can, but we welcome that. And we are actively engaging with businesses at all times through our membership department to make sure we're getting the right level of participation. But our content team is separately profiling, listing, highlighting itineraries and guides and business owners throughout the five boroughs.
And how are you folks either using the advertising or the marketing in a way where we are making sure tourists feel safe coming to New York City or trying to counter the maybe media narrative that could be out there and traveling to New York City?
The marketing team works very much in tandem with our global communications team to do whatever is possible to promote positive messaging in New York City and also to educate visitors and locals as to how best to navigate the city. Where we were very much in the thick of COVID, we had, I think, our highest traffic page on our website was our COVID Resources page to help visitors navigate how best to experience the city safely and in the best way possible. We still have that information on our website for those that are interested. We want to make sure alongside the content that we're helping people understand how best to navigate, how to get to various neighborhoods, transportation, et cetera. So that is ongoing, but our global communications representatives make sure that they do whatever they can to promote the positive, good news about New York City all around the world.
And do you folks also promote some of the things they can benefit from, either like the MetroCard or reduced fare or even just like social norms, like walk to your right and walk fast, things like that?
We do incorporate some of that, yes. It's very popular content.
Just asking, just asking, you know? Gotta know we're targeting the right message here for New York City. Awesome. That's great to know. I recently learned, and I'm still fact-checking this, so please don't quote me on this, but we don't have a residency requirement for the Fair Fares program. So if someone like traveling domestically could actually come and get a reduced fare, even if they're here for two weeks or they're here for a couple months visiting families. So I'm wondering on our end, are we doing best to promote some of the benefits of maybe staying for a prolonged time with getting a reduced fare? So thank you for answering that. And if we can look more into that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Has NYCTC mimicked or learned from tourism initiatives in other U.S. cities, especially with post-COVID recovery?
We have great relationships with our competitors. It's an interesting dynamic in the destination marketing space. We learn from each other, and we, especially during the pandemic, I think, shared quite a bit of best practices because the truth is, we were all experiencing the same thing. We were just at a different level because we're New York City, and we were the epicenter in the beginning of the pandemic, as we all remember. So I think there's a lot of communication in the industry. We do what's right for New York City, but it's always good to be informed with what other destinations are doing. But we all followed a bit of a similar playbook in terms of starting with a very hyper-local targeting to our programs, fishing where the fish are, where people were, starting with locals and then expanding outward. Beyond that, we do what's right for us.
Great. And I feel like some of this was already answered, but I'm just gonna ask, what information is disseminated from the International Office? Like, is the information created in response to the interest and feedback of the country's residents? And how do these offices identify interest and collect that feedback to create campaigns to visit New York?
The majority of what our International Office is focused on are working with the trade, both from a meeting planner perspective and travel trade perspective. So local tour operators, travel agencies, receptive operators, meeting planners, that are making sure that the trade is fully briefed on the level of product in New York, openings, what is happening in the boroughs, making sure they're educated. So we do sales trainings. We bring our members into the market with us in our sales missions. We do trade shows in those markets. They're really boots on the ground to ensure that they are staying very close to the trade on both business and leisure to ensure that we're top of mind, that we're securing leads for meetings and events, that they're just staying very close so that New York City remains top of mind as a destination, but the product updates are continual so that they're aware that when you arrive in New York City, there are many more places to visit than some of the trade may think. And with the pandemic, there was quite a bit of turnover. So we're very much focused on reeducation with the trade, and it's a continual process. So the offices really supplement our efforts at the corporate office to make sure that we're really staying close.
Great. And I just have some questions around the International Office or the office spaces that we potentially have. How many brick-and-mortar offices do we have internationally?
We have seventeen international offices.
They're representatives, not employees.
Correct.
It's a consulting representative contract, not an employee.
Okay, so we have-- the brick-and-mortar places are seventeen, and then we have consultant staff that's in each of those that you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. do we have an idea of how many staff we have internationally or how many people we consult with?
We can get that for you.
Sure. And then around the-- for me, like, return on investment based on all these sites and offices abroad, what does that look like?
I think that what we are looking at in the sense of-- one of the things we look at in the surveys that I deal with directly is what percent of our key markets rely on travel agents? How many of them are influenced by destination websites and things like that? So we have a sense as we go into the market, what's the best channel for reaching people? When we have an actual spend, not our own resources, like the communications work, a press release, or work on our digital and social channels, then that comes back to the work we did in this last year and a half of measuring the actual effect of ad budgets. And we did look at them in different countries. Different countries and populations do react differently, and that goes into the planning side. So we know which-- So we know which markets were the quickest to react, which markets are more likely to react to certain kinds of advertising. That's the art and science of what the marketing team does.
And if I can just add to that, in, in many cases internationally, the, the, you're not able to reach the visitor directly through a B to C campaign. They do book through the trade. They'll use a tour operator more so than they will book themselves. So we really need to make sure that the relationships with the travel trade, the key trade partners in that region are activated. And it would be a little unwieldy for us to be able to come in and out of the market from here on a, on a daily basis. But it's critical that we have that connection. Otherwise, we're really not able to reach the end consumer.
Okay, I have just like questions around maintaining the offices, like the cost of maintaining the offices, rent overhead. Do you folks have that stuff available today?
Are you referring to our domestic office here?
No, our, our international spaces.
We don't maintain those offices.
Okay, so.
Where we hire them as a consultant.
Yeah.
Okay, so each of those seventeen offices, we have a consultant contract with them where you could, I could potentially go there and have a meeting, but it isn't a brick and mortar space that we pay for.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not brick and mortar.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. That's just questions for clarification, that's why we're here. Okay, great. And then I just have some last budget questions and I'll pass it over to my co-chair. What funding sources does NYCCTC receive besides operating costs from the city?
We raise private revenue primarily through our membership base. So the approximately eighteen hundred to two thousand members that we have, many of which pay dues to, to us to market the city on their behalf. There is some amount that we raise through advertising on our website as well as sponsorships. So for example, Mastercard is currently a global sponsor and we're looking to renew that relationship if, if possible.
And have those sources changed during the pandemic to now?
Drastically, yes.
Okay, what was NYCCTC's fiscal 2023 adopted budget?
So. No, I'm not, I don't actually have the answer. I have the notes. We can provide more detail after.
So the original budget for fiscal year twenty-three totaled forty-three point five million, which included eleven point two in non-recurring city funding. And in fiscal year twenty-two, the budget was sixty-one point four million, which included thirty million from the ARP funding. So, so stripping out these non-recurring revenues, our budget for fiscal year twenty-three was thirty-two point three million and twenty-two was thirty-one point four million. Pre-pandemic, we were in the forty million dollar range. So we, we've, we've, we've experienced decreases across the board.
Yeah, and have you folks had to reconstruct its budget this fiscal year due to projected increases in tourism numbers? Or how has the decreases that have occurred impacted the budget?
We, we are experiencing a peg adjustment, so we're in the process of planning out a reduced budget now. And we'll determine how that impacts services. Ultimately, it will result in likely a decrease in our media spend, which will impact our, our reach in the campaigns we mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you so much for answering my questions and I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Chairman.
Great, thank you so much. Before I begin, I just want to recognize Councilmember Krishnan and Councilmember Gutierrez have joined us. So you mentioned that you all are going to be under a peg. I want to understand if you, in terms of, obviously employee travel is an important aspect of what you all do. Are you following Controller's Directive Number Six, which limits lodging, travel expenses?
My understanding is yes, we follow, yes.
So all NYCCTC employees are following Controller's Directive Number Six, which limits the cost of hotel, airfare, all of that?
Since we're not a city agency, we don't really follow it exactly, but we do set our own parameters for travel, which is why the international offices being on the ground makes it a lot easier for us to scale back travel as needed.
No, understood. I mean, you're obviously a separate 501(c)(3), you're not a city agency. But given that the city has allocated for fiscal year twenty-three approximately thirty-one million dollars, you know, I think it's important that our respective committees get that information just in terms of what restrictions have you set on employee travel? Because every city employee is subject to this and it's obviously tight budget time, so it's incredibly important. So if you could please get to both committees that information. So one of the, I'm really interested, obviously as the Chair of the Small Business Committee, in the interaction between NYCCTC and small businesses. So in your testimony, you indicated that you represent the interest of two thousand member small businesses. So we have approximately two hundred thousand small businesses, so that's about one percent of the city's small businesses. Can you speak about these two thousand members? Is there, are they being charged a fee to be a member?
The, the membership base is across all businesses within tourism and hospitality within our purview. So that, that's likely why, obviously it's a smaller number. We're, we remain focused on tourism and hospitality businesses and we, we are welcoming more every day.
But is there a fee for those businesses?
Yeah, there, there are fees for some businesses. During the pandemic, we definitely waived those fees. And thanks to the support of MOM, we were able to waive them for the participation in our programs, which is typically required. And the fees scale depending on the size of the business.
What is the fee scale?
It's, I don't have the actual numbers, but it is based upon revenues of the business. So the larger, more affluent, more higher revenue businesses pay a higher fee and it is halved in the boroughs. So whatever that fee was based on your revenue, it would be half of that to distinguish between a Manhattan-based business and a borough-based business. And it comes down to, in some cases, a few hundred dollars a year. So a small business for the marketing services that NYC Tourism and Conventions provides would be perhaps charged five hundred dollars to participate in this larger marketing initiative, which gives them access to all the sales possibilities, the marketing visibility, the website, the research, the networking, the business meetings, all of that comes, plus the visibility of they're the ones who are listed on our website and with direct links to the business. So if you're looking up a restaurant that serves Sri Lankan food, there might be several in the city. But the ones who are members of NYC and Company, when you see that list, there's a direct link to their website.
And how many members are outside of Manhattan?
I think I have to look that up. It's a growing number every year.
Like a rough estimate?
Probably about thirty-five to forty percent at this point, particularly because of the initiatives.
Thirty-five to forty percent are outside of Manhattan?
Yeah.
Okay, could we get a breakdown by borough of the, of the number? I mean, my concern is that we're, obviously coming out of the pandemic, we have close to two hundred thousand small businesses. Most of these small businesses can never afford the fee. I personally believe the tourism arm of the city, particularly one that's receiving this kind of city funding, should be promoting every small business, you know, throughout the city without having to charge those fees, particularly the businesses that can't afford it.
May I ask, I'm a little unclear. My colleague pointed out that we promote businesses that visitors, tourists, business travelers to the city can benefit from. And so many of the small businesses in this city are in retail categories that visitors are not engaged in. They are in neighborhoods that are very residential and are not directly being affected by visitation to arts and cultural, sporting events, other activities across the borough. And so where we are focused is on businesses that are likely to directly come in contact with a visitor or come in contact with a entity like a hotel or a restaurant that can buy goods and services from them.
Sure, so let me clarify. So first of all, it's focused on domestic tourists, international tourists, and New Yorkers visiting these small businesses. No, I'm saying this is what I believe we should be like buy local, shop local. I just want to tell you what I think we could be doing and what I know other cities' tourism arms are doing. And so this is what I'm really urging you all to do. And then really the point of the hearing and why we want to have the hearing is to try to brainstorm about how we can support more small businesses in the city. So for example, one of the things that we did at MOM is we did walking tours of film and movie locations in all five boroughs. And then tried to get those tourists to then go to small businesses in those neighborhoods. So those are the kinds of things. I understand you might be doing it one way now. We're trying to urge you to do it now a different way, given the pandemic and given the fact that you're getting a very significant amount of city money. We're trying to be proactive about how can we best support the city's small businesses in every neighborhood across the city.
So we are doing that now. If, if the goal is to include more businesses in the efforts that we have currently, because we are in fact promoting walking tours as we speak. And we have times of the year where we do that, spring is where we, where we begin to kick that off. We're open to including as many businesses in, in our membership purview as, as possible. So we, we do rely on our membership team, the chambers, the bids, and partnering with you all to engage with as many as possible. So there's definitely an openness there. It's just as many as we could physically onboard. But we, we do everything we can to promote our programs. But our vibrancy campaigns happen twice a year, every year. So there's always planning that we can do. And then the in-between, so we'll do a content push around shopping four times a year, walking tours, historical tours. There's always opportunities to feature more. So I guess it, it really depends on, we should brainstorm on, you know, what, what are we talking about? Because the biz, the, the budget has been severely challenged. Our budget hasn't been raised in twelve years while our cuts have been ongoing. So without the additional funding we received during the pandemic, we are not well-resourced. But there's work at hand that we're, we are currently doing. And we, we would love to partner with you to expand what we're doing. But again, to Donna's point, our, our purview is visitors. So that's people visiting from fifty miles and beyond, wherever they come from. So as long as it makes sense, we're, we're very willing and, and very happy to, to expand the membership base.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be great if you all put together a plan that, for example, for every major destination that tourists are going to, if they're going to the Bronx Botanical Garden, if they're going to the Bronx Zoo, all the small businesses that are adjacent to that, promoting those small businesses and doing, you know, some kind of package so that you go to the botanical garden and then you're going to restaurants in the neighborhood, like so that we're really partnering. I mean, I had a meeting with, with you all about this and specifically we talked about Arthur Avenue and restaurants and how to promote them and all of that. But I think it should be expanded again to all of these neighborhoods because they're treasures and jewels, whether they're cultural organizations or other tourism spots that people are going to. I just don't want the small businesses then to be left out of the equation.
And I can assure you they are not. And we could share the various neighborhood guides that we are currently doing. We are also updating our website, so it will involve a lot more cross-pollination. So and mapping capabilities, we, we needed to get out of the twentieth, twentieth century with our website. So we'll have a lot more mapping capability and, and nudging people. So if they're going to a particular attraction, nudging them toward restaurants nearby with the new infrastructure. But we, we are doing that today and I'm happy to share examples of the work.
That would be, that would be great. That would be very helpful. Which bids are you working with in the city?
Virtually all of them. I counted, I think twenty bids in eight chambers of commerce on our website yesterday.
You said twenty bids?
Twenty bids in eight chambers. I don't have the actual list.
Okay, I'm going to request then that you, there are seventy-six bids. If you could please reach out to every single bid in the city. Because again, all of them have, you know, are, are receiving tourists in some form or another. But then we want to make sure that there is that interaction with the small businesses.
I would imagine that our teams have reached out, but I am sure they can do a double visit.
Okay.
Chairman, and just to add in that the New York City Tourism and Convention Group, they actually have joined our bid calls, as well as we featured all of their programming in our newsletter that goes out to all the bids.
Okay, okay. If we could talk a little bit about advertising, are you, my understanding is you're doing a lot of in-house advertising. Is a hundred percent of your advertising handled in-house?
What part of that do you mean?
Well, in other words, are you partnering with any of the, we've got some of the greatest ad agencies creatively in New York City. Are you working with any external ad agencies or is everything handled in-house?
We handle the creative development in-house. The media buying we use an external agency for.
Right, I just mean, because one of the things I think that's been very successful in the past is when some of the ad agencies pro bono have been advising some city agencies. So if that is something that could be looked at, again, you know, I mean, one of the things that comes to mind from my work I did at MOM is the made, that iconic Made in New York logo that Radical Media designed. You know, going to some of these ad firms, seeing if they will work with the city pro bono to do a really outside-of-the-box advertising and marketing campaign to bring more tourists to the city and specifically to focus on the small businesses would be, I think, a great thing to do.
We, we have many folks that have come from those large agencies in-house in our organization. So, you know, while we've had offers of pro bono work during the pandemic, it never turns out the way it was proposed in, in reality. So we, we, we have, we have the creative development work well-handled. We just won two Emmys last year for our content and a Webby and two Shorties are, are on the table now. We're good there. We're, we're challenged with the media dollars to push it out. So there, it's, it's, it's not surprising that you may not have seen a lot of the content because it's really about the distribution of that content. And where, where our budgets are challenged is in the media dollars to, to promote it. So creatively, we're, we're actually fine. It's just more on the broader side of the distribution.
And what about using celebrities? Colorado has a very innovative campaign that they're running right now, using celebrities to visit the state. What, I mean, after nine eleven, obviously there was, you know, really strong marketing to visit New York. What are you doing in terms of that?
During the pandemic, we reached out to several celebrities to help promote itineraries in their favorite neighborhoods. And we had about thirty of them from across, across all sectors of entertainment on our website. Since then, it's, it's difficult to receive truly pro, pro bono work. And working with celebrities, I have a lot of experience with that. It's expensive. We're always open to more pro bono relationships. But the, the peak of the pandemic, when folks were very interested in helping New York City, we, I think tapped into that nicely with, with the itineraries. And since then, we're really relying on the power of the travel partners to book those trips to New York. And as we've seen, it's been very effective for the last year.
Okay, I, I just want to, before turning to my colleagues for questions, I have some questions in terms of SBS. What is the nature of the relationship then between NYCCTC and SBS in terms of helping to promote small businesses?
Thank you very much for that question. We're really happy to be partnering with this great sister agency. And what we do is we cross-promote each other. So all of their campaigns, NYC Restaurant Week, all the other campaigns that they do, but also their neighborhood guides. We actually feature all of this on our website and they help cross-promote our Shop Your City campaign, which we're really pleased to say that, you know, we took it last year to Shop Your City. We built the website, we added the maps. They were done not only by neighborhood, but by owner demographics. And then we expanded it to be Small Business Week last year, where we went to five boroughs in five days. And we were really so pleased with what we, what we did because we reached three thousand businesses on the ground. We walked the corridors of the five, the five neighborhoods we were in. We went to five hundred businesses during that week and let them know about SBS services. This month, this year, we're going to do something different and I'm really happy to say we're doing Small Business Month. We're going to celebrate the entire month of May. And we're not only celebrating each of the neighborhoods and their corridors, but we're actually also spotlighting the different services that SBS provides. So I really look forward to sharing the Small Business Month calendar with you. I encourage all of you to join us in what I think is going to be a really fantastic month. And I know that our friends over at New York City Tourism and Convention will also be cross-promoting. And prior to this, we've been brainstorming as to how we can work together to feature an event with them during the month. So it's going to be really great collaborative and it's a lot of partnerships and I can't wait to talk to you more about it.
Okay, great. In terms of information that is at various tourist booths and things like that, it's, how many languages is that information in?
I'm not sure which visitor centers, we, we don't operate any visitor centers. We have branded and we help supply the visitor center inside of Macy's Herald Square. Other than that, and there, we also partner with Empire State Building and their observatory, providing content and there are video blades.
But are you giving brochures and stuff at major cultural destinations, museums, things like that?
We publish a map twice a year that's promoted everywhere. Its distribution is throughout the five boroughs. Its distribution is throughout the five boroughs, and wherever appropriate, in places like Grand Central Station and all of the airports. But it's really more about producing digital guides at this point. Not many, not as many folks are interested in carrying booklets anymore, so we have pause our visitor guide, but we're promoting everything on our website and have designed it in a way that it could be used mobily and mobile-first, and 60% of our website traffic is from mobile. So we're really more focused on getting more scale and awareness around things from a digital standpoint. But we do produce the map twice a year.
And can you get that map to us so we can see that? I think that would be helpful. A couple more questions for SBS, and then want to call on our colleagues to ask questions. Is SBS tracking the number of tourists that are coming to businesses overall? I mean, what kind of data metrics in terms of tourism is SBS keeping?
Thank you for the question. We're actually not tracking it ourselves. We're working with our partners and using their data. It's really quite amazing data that we've seen from them, and so we rely on them.
Okay. Okay. I have, I actually have a lot more questions, but let me open it up at this point to colleagues who might have questions. Okay. Okay. Majority Whip, Sabrina Brooks-Parris. Thanks.
Thank you, Chairs, and thank you for the testimony. It was interesting to hear the acknowledgement that you target communities that are not necessarily residential. However, under the past administration of de Blasio, he was known for opening hotels in those type of communities, which are now shelters. But here we are. So I'll start with the question of what funding sources does NYCTC receive besides operating costs from the city? How have these resources changed also in the pandemic? Let's see. While you look for the answer, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So we have multiple private funding sources, all of which were negatively impacted by the pandemic. The largest individual source of funding comes from our membership organizations, the hotels, restaurants, retailers, and attractions that we mentioned earlier, who contribute membership dues, participate in our programs, and co-pay exhibitor fees at trade shows and missions, and purchase advertising on our website and guides. Total revenues from these members pre-pandemic was in the region of 9.3 million, and it went down to 3.7 million in fiscal year '22.
Thank you. And then, how does NYCTC factor in equity as it considers which businesses to recruit and partner with? And do you have a breakdown of member businesses sorted by borough?
We can provide that to you, absolutely.
But you don't, you don't have it right now?
Not right here, no.
Okay. Do you also have a breakdown of member business owners sorted by race, ethnicity, and gender?
I don't believe we have it sorted in that manner, but we can, we can try to do that.
Okay. And when seeking to partner with businesses, NYCTC do target, do targeted outreach to businesses in outer borough communities and communities of color?
Do we target those businesses?
Yes.
Absolutely. I'll be happy to send you links to the most recent series we are in the process of completing called Local Legends. It's just the newest example of how we approach our content, where we profile various neighborhoods in the outer boroughs to really, through the eyes of what we are calling the sort of mayors of those neighborhoods. So folks in neighborhoods who either own local businesses or have lived in that area for some time, who really show us around their kind of view of the neighborhood and highlighting local businesses that they want the world to know about. And those are the, those are the pieces of content that we recently won the Emmys for last year and have been very well-received with, I think we're going to about 4 million views. We've done one piece of a six-minute video, one per borough, and we're looking at ways that we can resuscitate that series after the next one launches. We've so far featured Washington Heights, Staten Island, Mott Haven, and we're going into Flatbush next.
Thank you. Does NYCTC, like, are you required to follow the city's MWBE participation guidelines at all?
No, we are not.
Okay. Do you track MWBE participation?
Our membership team, absolutely. And we work every day between our Government Affairs Department, our Membership Department, and our Content Team to make sure that we are actively engaging MWBE businesses, so our, and businesses that are based in New York City, of course, as well as the content that we showcase, that we are ensuring that it is equitable and diverse coverage, and making sure we're representing the fabric of New York City accurately and with the right amount of equity, inclusion, and diversity.
So in your collaboration with the businesses, particularly the small businesses, what does that look like?
The participation in our programs, where we are, our goal is to drive awareness, visibility, and sales to our local businesses. So everything we do is designed with that in mind, from the content we produce, to push out into the world, to our editorial content on our website, to our programs.
I'm sorry, but for the, like, small businesses specifically, because I know earlier you mentioned that there's a difference as a scale in terms of their membership dues, for example. So when you're collaborating with the small businesses, does that get factored in? Is it accounted for from NYCTC to kind of adjust so that they can get proper, I guess, engagement as well?
The, what we were referencing earlier in terms of our content campaigns doesn't correlate to the amount of money a member is paying us, if I'm understanding correctly. Once, once we are engaged with a business, we look for every possible opportunity to showcase them. It's, it's really up to us to make sure that a visitor has the richest experience, and we aim to push people out into the, every neighborhood and borough on a daily basis. So everything we do is an attempt to engage as many businesses as we can that a tourist might be interested in experiencing. So we don't have regard for how much a business is paying us or if they're paying us. We did pro bono many businesses during the pandemic, and because of the support of MoM, we were able to afford to do that. The funding we received is, since been spent, so we're, we don't, we don't distinguish between who is paying us more in member dues. We make sure that we engage as much as possible with every business that's a member of NYC and Company, and make sure that borough by borough, sector by sector, we're incorporating them as much as we can.
Can I just ask one more question, Chair?
Of course.
Does NYCTC survey small businesses, and if so, on what?
We conduct a series, a regular series of surveys of our members on what their needs and activities are and how we can help them. During the pandemic, that regular cycle was interrupted for a variety of reasons, partly because people did not have the leisure time to answer a survey even online. The cycle will resume probably in the second half of this year, where we're looking at our, the businesses that are engaged with the travel sector, the ones who are likely to benefit from someone visiting their neighborhood, visiting the city, who need something as part of their experience of New York, to survey the entire small business sector as far outside our remit in terms of attracting visitors to New York City.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilmember Vilaes.
Thank you, Chairs, for holding this important hearing, and thank you for being here. Can you talk to us a little bit about what the challenges are to getting to a full tourism recovery across all five boroughs? Or specifically, rather, well, let me, let me let you answer that.
I think there are few. I think we are all feeling the loss of the Chinese visitor. They were in our top five markets previous to the pandemic, and without that return, we were, we're very much focused on diversifying our approach and focusing on other emerging markets where we are seeing growth, like Brazil, India, Mexico. But that, that obviously has impacted many major destinations, but we are, we are continuing to, again, diversify. We also have seen great growth in far, farther-out U.S. domestics and more of the long-haul markets, U.S. domestics. So we're just diversifying the marketing approach and the media targeting approach accordingly. We are seeing steady improvement. I also think we are a little bit behind with regard to business event and travel, so that's continuing to rebound. So, so we're watching it, and we're continuing to push in those areas, but they're not quite back to pre-pandemic levels. So I feel like that's, that's, that's where we're seeing the primary amount of the shortfall.
And, and what are you doing in response to, to get back to those, to those levels?
We're diversifying our approach. We're focusing on other markets to replace what we have lost with China. So we've now got campaigns in 18 markets, and we're doubling down where we are seeing growth. So the markets that I just mentioned, for example, India, Mexico, Brazil, Australia, we're seeing great growth there. Long-haul domestic, where we didn't really focus as much pre-pandemic, we've doubled down on those campaigns. So the campaigns that we do with travel partners like United Airlines and beyond, that is where we've really made sure that any funding we have received has been converted to working dollars to support those campaigns. The power in what we do is in the media, and where we are now currently experiencing the shortfall because all of the, all of the recovery funding we received has been spent on those campaigns. That is where we're most concerned with maintaining the momentum we have achieved because we have achieved momentum, and we know that through our, our research that we've recently concluded.
I'm certainly delighted to hear that the numbers are rebounding. Often, the hearings are a lot of doom. Can you, can you, is that rebounding across New York City? And I represent, I represent District 38 in Brooklyn, so I'll ask more specifically. But are you seeing the same levels of rebounding in the outer boroughs?
We believe we are in terms of the way we're seeing activity and spending. One of the resources we rely on is anonymous credit card spending data that we get in a contract with Visa, and it tells us which countries and which markets visitors come from by, and where they are in the boroughs. And we've seen some very dynamic recoveries. Some of it connected to visiting friends and relatives and exploring neighborhoods where your friends and relatives live. So the different communities that are connected globally to New York is a benefit for us. The Dominican community in the Bronx was very active during the pandemic as visitors could come. Some of the Caribbean communities in Brooklyn, the Hispanic and South American communities in Queens, and so on. That's one of the ways we look at it. It is, there are also additional challenges that are far outside any of us in this room, which is, for many of our international markets, the ability to get a travel visa to enter the U.S. is, become extremely time-consuming in addition to difficult and expensive. And so for many of the markets we're targeting, this is now a major delay. Our colleague Alexandra Silversmith is actually in Washington, trying to remind the government that these visa application processes are affecting everyone and the travel. As much of a third of the Chinese market is likely to be without a visa. People who had a visa no longer have a viable visa, the same is happening in Brazil, in Colombia, and in a number of key markets where people can't even enter the U.S., even if they want to visit New York City. So we're working on a different front to address that as well.
Thank you. Wow, the time went quickly.
You got beeped.
In particular, what I didn't hear was any partnership with the cruise industry. Now, I do, I represent District 38, which includes Red Hook, which includes the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal. The business community there has been fighting tooth and nail to get something as meager as a sign to let the cruise, the folks that come off the cruise line to know that there is a community there with a number of small businesses. They have yet to receive not so much as a sign on that terminal. It's been a longstanding battle. The business community, the small businesses, have been willing to pay for things themselves and make their own signs, but we have a cruise terminal with no signage at all. In fact, the last sign there is Marty Markowitz. I don't even know what to say about how we manage tourism when we, we have this giant cruise terminal that welcomes people, and then we put them on a bus straight to Manhattan. They don't even know that there's a vibrant community there with arts and small businesses and wonderful restaurants that is within walking distance.
I think two things. It's my understanding that the terminal is managed by EDC. We do not manage it. Our development teams do work with the cruise lines and encourage them to essentially shop local and build out, again, when New York is a home port, it means that it's locals getting on the ship to sail somewhere else, and then they get off the ship, they get in their car, and they drive home. When New York is a destination port, those are the companies and the tour operators that we do educate about what's available, but signage at the terminal itself is an EDC question.
So these are destination ports. There's no signage.
They're both.
There's no kiosk welcoming people to the various opportunities.
It's not us. I mean, we would be happy to source it.
So there's no collaboration, there's no collaboration with EDC on, on this at all?
I don't know that there, there is at this moment. We can double-check.
It seems like a giant gap to not have collaboration with EDC for cruise terminals when we're the destination.
We can reach out to EDC and follow up with them.
Great, because my community is utterly upset that there is no, they're not connected to any economic opportunity for a cruise industry that just pollutes its ports and takes people and moves them to Manhattan. Like, we are entirely left out of that equation. So we'd love to follow up some more about that. And, you know, in this area, just not, not to belabor, but there is no, Red Hook is a small community. There is no business, there is no bid, but there is a business alliance, and they have been knocking on every door only to be ignored. And I would encourage you all to absolutely reach out, and they should not be paying any fees to participate in New York City tourism. I guess, I guess that's it. I will follow up some more.
I want to echo what Councilmember Vilaes said. I mean, I think, again, there's got to be collaboration. I don't think it's a good enough answer to say, oh, this is EDC's problem. I mean, we're all here to try to work collaboratively together. And so, you know, I definitely want to echo what the council member is saying. I think it would be great if there could be some kind of event that is really promoting small businesses around Red Hook and, you know, doing some kind of, maybe it's a walking tour, maybe it's something, food tastings at restaurants. But this is really one of the things that we want to get out of this hearing, is to try to think outside of the box of what can be done to help the city's struggling small businesses. I think that's a, you know, very perfect example. But I do have some more questions. Okay. How often does NYCTC receive calls or inquiries from tourists asking about small businesses or where to go?
It's funny, there used to be a lot more of them. When I started 20 years ago, they were regular and all the time. Now we get a number of emails, but people have become really quite competent and comfortable with their phone devices, and they Google things, and they check our website, and they look around and do it quite independently. We still get an occasional email. It shows up in various offices of ours, and then we will, I'll answer my phone. My phone number is one of those that's on the website, and so I get those calls. And there's no specific system for it, but it's people who still need to talk to somebody to ask a question. It's not any, it's not a particularly high number at this point. It has dropped off significantly because people have become much more comfortable with this.
And in terms of social media, are you all using social media to promote the city's small businesses?
Absolutely, almost on a daily basis.
And are you only promoting those that are paying the fee?
No.
So all, so other, so how are they, how are these other businesses selected in terms of being promoted?
We focus on our member base, and again, not every member is even paying a due right now because of the pandemic implications, and we are able to support that because of the support we because of the pandemic implications. And we are able to support that because of the support we've received from Moam. So we're, we're, we're doing it on a content strategy basis. So if we decide we're featuring culturals like we are about to embark upon for the next four weeks, it's, it's our team doing the research, working with our membership department to understand what might be of interest. How do we craft those into guides? Who are we featuring? It's a creative decision that is informed by the work between our Government Affairs and our Membership Department is doing to determine what is our, it's really making sure that our members are at the forefront of our messaging.
And in terms of the cultural campaign, what's the borough-by-borough breakdown of the cultural organizations?
I'm happy to follow up with that. I don't have it handy, but.
Okay.
We have 100 organizations total and they are, we are five borough, but I'll get that.
If you could provide that. And then what is the plan, since there is this cultural campaign, what's the plan then to integrate small businesses that might be adjacent to those cultural organizations?
The program is designed to highlight the participants in the program. So they're each encouraged to offer some sort of a unique offering, whether that's a behind-the-scenes tour or a talkback, whatever it may be. We're driving traffic to those locations. While folks are on the website looking at those locations, they will see suggestions for other places to go during their visit. But it's designed to highlight the businesses that we are featuring.
And the NYC Go Local campaign, is that still running?
We evolved that campaign into our Local Legend series, which is the series, the six-minute films that I mentioned earlier. Those are out in the wild and we are driving traffic back to our neighborhood guides. And we have several content packages, the Black Experience in NYC, the Latino Experience in NYC, and the Asian Experience in NYC. That's all integrated within that content. So as we push, that content is designed to drive interest and traffic back to the website where all that information lives. So it's neighborhood guides, it's all the experience packages and everything in between. And we drive visitors in between those pages.
And is there any way to measure data metrically, how many small businesses can benefit from that kind of advertising? And if so, which ones?
We, we, we have through our Google Analytics, understanding of the traffic each page of the website is receiving and the clicks out to those business pages. So again, it depends on if there's a, if there's a defined offering, like it's time for Culture or Restaurant Week, we measure the clicks out and, for example, OpenTable metrics. So we can see who is getting the most traffic. And then the businesses ultimately will need to give us sales metrics. But we can measure as far as we take it, which is the click out to either buy or reserve. And yes, we have that by, by business.
And, and what about Restaurant Week, Month? Can, how do you measure those data metrics? And can you talk about how many, can you talk about the borough breakdown of, of restaurants there?
Yeah, I, I didn't bring any of the borough breakdown, but we're happy to, to follow up with that because our borough participation in Restaurant Week is growing every program. But we are actively looking for more participants with every program.
Yeah, cause I'm hearing some concern from some colleagues about that. I mean, I think it's super important to work with the bids. So for those neighborhoods where you don't have restaurants, working with the bids, working with the Borough Chambers of Commerce to identify restaurants.
Yes, and we do that currently through, between our Government Affairs Group and our Membership Team. We are actively doing that today. It's, it's, having come from the restaurant industry, it's, it's a little difficult to get anyone to focus on having to do paperwork and enroll in these programs. So it's definitely not for a lack of trying. We actually try to partner with local media to promote the program and engagement and participation even further. But again, that's where we want the further partnership with the council because we, we do want more participation. It's just, we're actively recruiting at all times and trying to promote the program. And because it happens every year, it's a little bit easier, hopefully, to plan ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'd appreciate any partnership with that. I know we've already spoken about the, the Go Local campaign and the Restaurant Week, because in District 18, we didn't have a single, unfortunately, we didn't have a single restaurant that was participating. I just wanted to ask, just before we move away from the, the, the local, the Go Local campaign effort, Councilmember Aviles had to run, but she wanted to follow up with, for the Shop Your City efforts that we're doing, Red Hook was not included at all in that effort. And she wanted some clarification on how our neighborhoods selected and supported in the Shop Your City.
So Shop Your City is our, our website and any business can go on and register to be part of the maps. We promote everyone through there. Last year was the first time we launched a big celebration across the boroughs. So we were really looking at some of the communities that have been not as well-served. So last year in Brooklyn, we were in the Black and Caribbean community in Bed-Stuy. We were in Little Sri Lanka in Staten Island. We were in Chinatown in Manhattan, Little Columbia in Queens, and Little Yemen in the Bronx. So it wasn't that we left any neighborhood out, but we're just building and we're growing each, each time. For example, this year, we're going to be in Far Rockaway talking about resiliency during Small Business Month. It's going to be a full calendar of events. We really look forward to working with the council and promoting it and actually hoping that you join us for some of these.
Excuse me, councilmembers. I do now have the participation by borough for our last two Restaurant Week campaigns, if you'd like. For, for Summer of 2022, which was free for all participants, we had 12 restaurants in the Bronx, 68 in Brooklyn, 33 in Queens, 12 in Staten Island, and 546 in Manhattan, 42 of which were in Upper Manhattan. And in Winter 2023, which was free for the first 50 participants in each region, we had 12 in the Bronx, 51 in Brooklyn, 32 in Queens, 14 in Staten Island, and 423 in Manhattan, 23 of which were in Upper Manhattan. So we're happy to email this to you if that's easier.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think it's obviously going to take a concerted effort, a team effort to make sure that more restaurants in other neighborhoods are participating. So I think we'll definitely talk to our colleagues about that because, you know, we want to see as many restaurants participate as possible. So that's so important.
Thank you.
So I don't have any more questions. I just want to say thank you very much for your testimony. We really want to partner with you. We're very excited about the possibility of increasing promotion to the small businesses. And so want to be partners to you and all of that, as do I know our colleagues.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming in today. And I want to reiterate the sentiments that Chair Menon has expressed. We want to be able to get our businesses out there, more recognition. We want people to come into our neighborhoods respectively. And we want to work with you to do that. And I will now kick it over to Committee Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairs. We'll now turn to public testimony. For in-person panelists, please come up to the dais once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, we will be calling individuals one by one to testify. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. So please begin once the sergeant has started the timer. Councilmembers who have questions for a particular panelist should raise their hands. And councilmembers who are here virtually, please use the Zoom raise hand function and your name will be called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer to give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I'm going to send it back to the chair for a moment.
I'd like to, I'd like the record to reflect that I've been joined, we've been joined by Councilmembers Coban and Kagan. Thank you.
The first panel we'll call today is Riva Shang and Ral Rivera. Please come up to the dais.
I'd also like to acknowledge you've been joined by Councilmember Velazquez.
Riva Shang, you may begin when you're ready.
Turn on your mic button. Yep.
Hello. Got it. Okay. Thank you, Committee Chairs Farias and Menon, the Economic Development Committee and the Small Business Committee for holding this hearing. My name is Riva Shang and I'm the Senior Coordinator of Small Business Programs at the Asian American Federation. Through our Small Business Program, we've worked directly with hundreds of Asian-owned small businesses throughout New York City. Our small businesses were the first to be pitched into crisis in 2020. And since then, as the city works towards economic recovery, the commercial corridors we serve in neighborhoods like Flushing, Jackson Heights, Elmhurst, and Sunset Park are still struggling. This is why we urge the committee to devote resources to promoting tourism in the city's ethnic commercial corridors, especially in outer boroughs. We propose that the council do this first by promoting inter-borough travel to local New Yorkers. Similar to SBS's Shop Your City campaign, the city should advertise its immigrant neighborhoods as exciting local day trip destinations for New Yorkers. As global cuisines and cultures become more popular than ever, New York City's abundance of authentic ethnic businesses should be recognized as one of our greatest resources. Moreover, SBS's work on campaigns like Shop Your City show that the agency has already produced relevant marketing materials. AAF last year, for example, collaborated with SBS on a promotional video featuring Murray Hill, Queens, a neighborhood that is home to the last truly authentic stronghold of the Korean diaspora. We would like to see SBS better leverage existing marketing materials like this video series, which capitalize on the local knowledge of community-based organizations like ours. A wider public campaign would also boost the city's still lagging MTA ridership by encouraging local New Yorkers to get back on the train and to take advantage of cross-borough bus routes. For example, bus shelter and train ads can feature the neighborhoods that are accessible by various routes. This also ties into our second related proposal, that SBS work directly with NYC TC in order to better promote outer borough and immigrant neighborhoods to tourists. NYC TC last year ran a campaign called NYC Like a New Yorker, which aimed to spotlight outer boroughs by featuring one borough per month in a press release. The campaign, like Shop Your City, primarily targeted local New Yorkers. The coexistence of SBS Shop Your City and NYC TC's NYC Like a New Yorker campaign speaks to a ripe opportunity for cross-agency collaboration. A collaboration between these two agencies could be extremely fruitful to advancing the goals of both. Promotional materials focusing on immigrant commercial corridors could and should be added to NYC and Co.'s advertising targeted towards national and international visitors as well. Such advertising would not just be a matter of paying lip service to diversity, but a real potential economic boon for the city. NYC TC is increasingly targeting Asian markets as travelers from this region spend increasing amounts of money on tourism. And for these tourists, the diasporic strongholds of NYC represent a fascinating kind of cultural tourism. Travelers from Korea are interested to see the last genuine diasporic strongholds. And the same may be said of visitors from China and Sunset Park or of India and Jackson Heights. As travelers from these countries looked in New York City more as a tourist spot, we hope to see the city's definition of its tourist attractions expand accordingly. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, and we look forward to continuing to work closely together.
Mr. Rivera, you may begin when ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Ral Rivera. I'm a New York City TLC driver. I'm a TLC driver advocate. Forgive me if I ramble a little bit. I didn't write anything down. You might be wondering why a taxi driver is here in, at the council. Well, I just want to bring a little bit of clarity to the council. I want you guys to understand that we have 175,000 small business owners. Those small business owners are immigrants. 90% of them are immigrants, people of color with a language barrier. The taxi driver, the Uber driver, the Lyft driver, the TLC driver here in New York City is a small business owners. They get attacked, they get marginalized. We are trying to get meetings with our council members. It's like pulling teeth. And I speak English. You understand what I'm saying when I ask for a meeting, when I send the email. I have to go outside and bang on your door, pull out a bullhorn and start yelling just to get meetings. The drivers are being ignored. I am a driver myself. I'm a native New Yorker. I was almost killed in an accident driving 12 hours a day in the city. And I want you to remember this, very important, very, very important. The drivers just received a raise from the TLC. Uber sued the TLC to stop that raise. And I tell everybody, but nobody wants to listen, the Seattle Uber driver, the Seattle Uber driver makes more money than the New York City Uber driver here. It doesn't make any sense. Does it cost more money to, to live in Seattle than in New York? I don't think so. They're making more than the driver here. The formula that TLC is using to give us a pay raise is not correct. They failed in court. When Uber sued, they won. They went and did something else and we got a small raise. We got 15 cents. The Uber driver got 15 cents. When, when the tourist is coming here to the city, who you think is taking them to their destination? You think a tourist is getting on a bus or on a train with loads and loads of luggage? No, they're calling the Uber driver. We are the first person they see once they land. Once they get here, we are the first people they see. And we talk to them and we give them tips, where to go, how to be safe. We want more respect for the driver. We want our meetings. If we send you an email and you're a council member, you have to represent your district. Every district has drivers. You don't even have to check. We're not just taxi drivers. We are New Yorkers and we are small business owners. We demand respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Thank you. We'll now move to the virtual portion of this testimony today. The first panelist up is Jessica Walker. Please wait for the sergeant to announce the timer before you begin.
Time has begun.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Jessica Walker. I'm the President of the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce. And our organization is a convener, voice, and advocate for the 100,000-plus businesses across Manhattan. Thank you for doing the hearing. I think, I definitely wanted to stay on just to make it known that I think this is a very important topic. Obviously, tourists are an important customer base for small businesses throughout the five boroughs, but they play an outsized role in Manhattan, particularly now when we're facing the significant losses of office workers who are working remotely. And data shows that we are approaching the new normal. Employers think that the new normal in terms of occupancy rates was going to be 56% in New York City. So we really do need the customer traffic from tourists to make up for the losses of, of what's happening with office workers. Just three points I want to make today. One, lots of great discussion today in terms of the need for great marketing. I think there's a lot more we, we could be doing to try to highlight legacy businesses throughout the five boroughs. Certainly, we should be giving, we should extend the free participation for restaurants, small business restaurants in Restaurant Week. So there's a lot that we can be doing there. Two, I do believe we do need to, as a city, continue to innovate, continue to compete. We are very supportive of bringing a casino to Manhattan, for example. We were supportive of the, the building of the Staten Island Wheel. That did not go through. But there's just a number of things that we could be doing that could be very exciting for the city to, to really draw in millions and millions more tourists quickly. And then three, I just always want to make it be known that, that we do need to continue to, to support small businesses. We are not out of the woods yet in terms of the recovery from the COVID crisis. Many small businesses have taken on a great deal of debt. And so even though things seem to be getting better, many are still struggling. So I just urge everybody to continue to find different solutions. We are, of course, supportive of trying to eliminate the commercial rent tax for restaurants and retail shops in Manhattan. We are supportive of expanding the Small Business Resource Network, which the city council has been very supportive of through the Five Borough Chamber Alliance. We have been, through that program throughout the five boroughs, we have helped maybe 30,000 small businesses in the last two and a half years. And I'm happy and proud to say that 77% of those helps were MWBEs. And so we do want to continue to keep that program going. But again, these are just some of the ideas. I just, but again, I just wanted to say that this is a very important topic, particularly for Manhattan, and happy to work with you on, on solutions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there's anyone else that didn't get an opportunity to testify, whether it's virtually or in person. whether it's virtually or in person, but there's no one here. Let us know now. Seeing none. Anything you have to say? No? All right, this is adjourned.